Good evening, all of us.
Yeah, sorry. Good evening. I'd like to call the January third, twenty twenty three meeting of the University Heights City Council where this is called.
That's here. Here.
Here.
This was here. So.
Here. 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 Please join me in the standing by the ladies. I want to make this to the planet of the United States of America. And to their holiday, rolling to San Juan. First item is the reading and disposal of the trail. We have seven minutes from December nineteen twenty twenty eight. Is there a motion? We have a motion approved. The minutes five is twice. Is there a second? Second item, any discussion? This is Thomas B. Hall.
This is Sam. This is Lando. Hi, Dr.
Hi.
This was.
Hi. 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 There are good motion carries. They're approved. Next is item four additions and removals from the agenda and the first committee. Our council members will state that the service director, Mr. Corney, has distributed a memo dated January three, twenty twenty three today for a revised proposal reconstructing the city hall entrance route given before the pandemic. We have seating. If I maybe we could add this to the agenda, because that would be discussed as well. Is there a motion to add this item to the agenda as the new item D? Motion by Mrs. Sax. Very sound. Second, second item is King. Any discussion? This is Thomas B. Hall.
This is Sam. This is Lando. Hi, Israel.
Hi.
What is I? So.
Hi. 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 Very good. This motion carries this item will be the new ID and our reminders will be reloaded accordingly. Are there any other additions or removals from the agenda this week?
Mayor? Yes. I'd like to add as a further discussion regarding move of city council meetings to city hall and a court from Director of Law.
I have that further discussion during those move of council leaders to city hall and the corporate director of law. Did I get that?
Yes.
Correct. A motion to add that as the new ID by Mr. Cool. Is there a second? Second item is playing though. Any discussion on the motion? Thomas B. Hall.
Sam. This is Lando. Hi, Israel.
Hi.
This was.
Hi. Hi. Very good. That will be the ID with then the motion and executive session to the new item. Are there any other additions or or removals from the agenda this week? Seeing none, we will then move to comments from the audience. Speakers are limited by minutes. Minutes taken reserved for this portion of the evening. There are people who want to address the city. Is there anybody here who carry the rest of the city of comments? All right, seeing well, we will then move on to reports and communications from the mayor and to the action there. State of the city address will be one in February fifteen, twenty twenty three at six P. M. in the auditorium at Dolan Science Center, John Carroll meetings. We agree of that now. Five years ago this week, I took office as the tenth mayor of the city of University Heights. Since then, we rebuilt the fire department. We reopened the fire prevention bureau, created the office of community police, established the city's first economic role department, rebranded the city, started the mosaic magazine, built new homes, including the city's first new housing development since nineteen seventies. Since we started five years ago, we reformed the building department. We elevated housing and community development as its own. We rebuilt the finance department, instituted best practices, and had clean on its ever since, even earning recognition from state auditor for excellence in financial reporting in twenty twenty one. We have constructed bike lanes on Lawrenceville Center Road and traffic home pedestrian safety enhancements on Lawrenceville Center Road, Green Road, and all along Cedar Road, especially at Cedar Green, Cedar Bell Park, Cedar Washington, and Cedar Thane. We have built a strong sense of community center around the mall with the improved conference series and also the annual mall fest and June key celebrations we started. Presently, work towards new municipal facilities is underway. Work towards updating our zone code is underway. Works with John Carroll University on their deal house is ongoing. We have committed to becoming a sustainable city, the projects and improvements plan. We were one of the twenty two communities recognized that power and future oil for our fresh commitment to sustainability in twenty twenty two. And in twenty twenty three, in the long, we will endeavor to live up to that commitment. The greenhouse gas inventory is underway and will be completed later this month. In order to measure improvements we made, we need to know our current starting point as we endeavor to reduce our carbon emissions by thirty percent by twenty thirty. All this, and we invite all the hearts to come to you. Turning to special use permits. We reproved and oversaw the construction of the Cleveland Community Info. We negotiated and approved the special use permit and worked closely with Zircon planning on the construction there in the city lot, which is well underway. We negotiated and approved the special use permit and just entered in late December twenty twenty two, the development agreement at last on the new Alexander School with construction plan to be finalized in the next six months. Under my administration, the city of University Heights has never rejected a special use permit for a house of worship. And under previous administrations, I am unaware of the last, there was an objection in that of a special use permit for a house of worship here in the city of University Heights. The Beasley University Heights Fall special use permit was approved under the previous administration, as was the initial special use permit for the Cleveland Community Big Fun, which was later extended and reapproved under my administration. And even before that, Zircon has current location adjacent to this district, but within a residential district, required and was approved for a special use permit years ago. At the last council meeting in twenty twenty two, council authorized by vote of five and two that the city entered into the settlement agreement for solving litigation with Alexander School. Though the city approved the special use permit over thirteen months ago, the settlement was at long last reached. Rabbi Shroy Ben Singer and I signed the settlement agreement the last week. The federal court accepted and entered it as an order of the court closing the case effective December twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, one day before the rule sixty eight deadline on the city's offer of judgment. There will be some motion practice regarding attorney fees as agreed. And the Alexander School is on the clock to decide plans that administration may review and approve for destruction within six months. The destiny of the Alexander School is in their hands. I look forward to the Alexander School joining the university formally at long last. Though that is all good news, I nevertheless have buried the lead, the most significant of the government to take on University Square. For some time, we have negotiated with Target Basins and the New Developers to break the impasse on redevelopment University Square. In December twenty twenty two, we came to terms on the MOU redevelopment of this long blinded center of our avenue. When the bottom holders foreclosed and took over the property in twenty thirteen, they had an eighteen to twenty four month plan to turn around University Square. Eight long years later, we now have the framework for finalizing the details for actual redevelopment of University Square. Once, as a mere resident, I thought this office in hopes of one day reaching this point. Like my neighbors and so many of you, I was tired of nothing being done with University Square. I began taking meetings on University Square in late twenty seventeen, even before I was sworn into my first term as mayor. I knew it wouldn't be easy because if it were easy, it would have been done already years ago before I even got involved myself. It was through sheer will, persistent efforts of this administration to the drug and blue McConville especially, and the refusal to give up or accept defeat or failure that has brought us to this point at last. For this, we can all be grateful and we can all share in the success of reaching this point, even as the work continues. This leaves one more area of municipal services that remains largely under the law, our service department. Yes, there have been some improvements. In twenty eighteen, we did increase the number of snow piles on the roads and cyclone. We modified the sensible software program to make pedestrians incredible, especially in areas with high numbers of pedestrians at times when we reasonably spent a high number of pedestrians. We made special payoffs for all pickup available online to order. We have encouraged home posts and greater practices regarding leaf pickup. It is still true, leaves leave faster when you bag them. However, with the twenty twenty three budget, we have not passed the fourth budget since receiving in twenty nineteen that are after recommendation of G team R and L to reform our solid waste pickup. In spite of the urgency of administration, the city council and the city council, I am executing particularly, have taken no action on modernization of our solid waste collection. And in fact, from the twenty twenty two budget, funding that would be done on modernization incrementally with the acquisition of recycled parts and implementation of loser cycle for acres. Costs continue to escalate. Equipment continues to be outdated. Labor continues to be scarce. Here in University Heights, we have difficulty hiring and keeping a full complement of full time compartment service employees. Next door, in Shade House, they too are seeking additional refuse collectors, six of them for their recent recurring job posting and even offering spending bonuses. We pay, we pay a fair wage for our service employee. But I am fully aware that service department and refuse collection work in other communities is more attractive than in ours because those departments modernize and University Heights have not. Rather than hoisting thousands of fifty pound garbage cans over their heads every meeting, the work elsewhere is less backbreaking and safer for automation. As if the reports from experts we retain and other expert input from the solid waste field were not known, the community was surveyed twice last year. And from that, we know that eighty four percent of the community thinks recycling is important. We know that while four out of ten residents would prefer to maintain the current method of pickup, five of ten are ready for change. And we know that residents who have lived elsewhere were curbside automated pickup of rubbish and of cycle was standard, but they tend to prefer that over backyard pickup. That's right. University Heights residents who are first and familiar with both curbside automated and backyard pickup tend to prefer curbside automated. You've known since before the twenty twenty three surveys from the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty solid waste study that keeping the current method of pickup is not sustainable, not from an ecological perspective, not from a financial perspective, not from a workplace safety perspective. No survey, not even two surveys, changes the past. Since October twenty two, we have begun paying about twenty five hundred dollars a month processed recyclers while other cities are getting paid for their recycling. And are recycling more in different items than our current stuff allows. Other cities can recycle polypropylene, plastic yogurt tubs, sour cream, while we cannot. Other cities actually recycle glass while our glass is simply ground and particularly painted. A reuse of that glass is better than landing, but not as good as actual recycle. The choice to modernize should be obvious, but but the city council plans to maybe clear this past fall, but it will not take it up during now completed twenty twenty three by itself. Therefore, the service and utilities committee will have another meeting on the subject tomorrow, January four, twenty twenty three, at six P. M. here at Wyndham. To the residents of this city, if you care about the environment, about better recycle, about workplace safety and fiscal responsibility, I suggest you attend tomorrow's meeting at Wyndham at six P. M. and be good. Thank you. This concludes my report. Next is reports and communications from city council and taking of action thereon. This is well. Thank you. So there any other reports? Seeing none, we will move on to the item eight regular items to the agenda. First is I may notice of appointment by council person Ryan King of David Jackson to the charter review commission. Mr. King.
Thank you, Mayor. On December twentieth, Rick Brown pathways. Everyone who knew him is devastated by the absence. I had that from our lives. Rick grew up on another road, went to high time, racist family, and left school quite fine hearted and dedicated family to France. The dedication was embodied without his life, serving and discovering, believing the others as an example. And on the charter review committee, presence of these sort of. On the one from place, Rick Brown, appointing David Jackson to the charter review commission. David has been a resident of University Heights since twenty nineteen instead of he roots the city. He is a real estate agent serving Heights. I know David is a student, awful person, using that student to be here at the bottom of the year. David will be an asset in his middle. Thank Chairman Steve Warthime for offering to bring David up to speed on the work of the charter review today. Thank you, Mr. King.
Are there any other comments on this that we can see? This is a. I think about being mayor of the city and and the people who live here. I think about why we do this and and the, you know, the good stuff, the bad stuff, the aggravation, friction, the puns stuff, all of them. You know, no resident comes to mind before Rick Brown. You grew up here. It was a high stakes going through. He was sweetheart of him. And we were all just absolutely stunned and still. Thank you, Mr. King, for your warm words of Mr. Brown. And thank you, Mr. Jackson, for stepping in on short notice. And what you, after what you said, you know, nobody can replace Rick Brown, certainly that's a big negative contribution here to support the university. Thank you. I'm D is a motion approved transportation services contract senior transportation connection. In your packet is a, is the contract, proposed contract of transportation services. Senior transportation section for transportation services. Just so everybody is aware, this is a program, a law team, a program law system, we're on board of senior transportation connection, which enables some of our most senior residents to age in place here in the city, which is really valuable value and and I believe do that. It is used by a large group of residents, but the residents do use it, rely on it in order to get to their medical appointments and their and their shopping. Nothing is much matters. On stats, in early mid-December, I would pull that there were about three hundred and sixty seven trips and there were seventeen residents who used those trips. Approximately one thousand two hundred and fifty miles traveled. Purposes broke down eighty nine for dialysis, one hundred and forty seven for other medical, nineteen for personal, one hundred and twelve for shopping. They do pay an affair as well. There's one thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars in fares paid. And most of these trips were for a single passenger. There were nine trips that involve two passengers. There aren't a lot of senior services that city offers. That's something that we all rectify over time. But this is an important and valuable service that that we want to continue. There are some changes in the contract. It is going to be a little more expensive. Student fuel surcharge is due to the cost of everything going on. And while previous years, it has generally stayed under the fifteen thousand dollar threshold, we reasonably expect it to exceed that, which is why the contract is strictly for you. That service continues, even though this contract may be effective January first, you would ask if you retrograde. This is a valuable service that we know is very important to these residents. It keeps them from being quickly shot shot and gets them to essential services and they couldn't live at University Heights. So that mine, I have asked for a motion approved and for discussion. This is second.
Um, was the mayor, was this step separately inside of the grounds?
Um, this is Thomas.
I don't know.
All right, we have motion table by Mrs. Watts. The second item is this blank. This is Thomas B. Hall. Oh, all right, go ahead.
I just want to say that this is, this is a service that we need to keep. It's, you know, as the mayor stated, something that I see just a while. Um, you know, we got to find that.
Yes, Mr. Cool. I'm just wondering, were there any other transportation services or transportation options that were considered? I don't know, maybe council question, Saxon or to the community if there are any other options or this is, I just wasn't even doing. Before I just ask the question, do you answer this is that you argue whether even there are opportunities there or not?
Thank you. Um, it's slim. If we could pick with success, then yeah, we probably have another way of any plans. You know, that would be helpful if there are some bridges to know about the absence that we've been, we've been to the end of the contract. Um, but in the absence of chemicals and laws and tracking, you know, there are other school agencies that have for their specific clients, not necessarily for municipalities. Whatever. Yeah, particularly municipalities.
I'm also not aware of anything comparable to. Most, there are municipalities that acquire a man, hire a driver, do themselves well to. Most, there are municipalities that require a man, hire a driver, and do this themselves, well, who could benefit that? This could be done better, cheaper, more effectively this way. And and we don't have the contract, I can tell you that there is a ninety-day opt-out provision where if for some reason we did find something that we would rather be doing. We're not committed for the whole year, the month, and that is just.
And there is there a, this senior transportation convention, uh, is council. If there are any analysis that they do a rider survey, set up action, things for quality improvement, or. I know that our ridership is lower, and I wondered if there was any data to help us with these numbers other than just.
Yeah, uh, I believe. I understand there are. Um, I have, um, attended their annual meetings and and seen some of this information. Uh, where the chairman is the, um, new executive director. That is, um. I I think that is, um. I'd be happy to ask her if she'd like to come.
Be great. It used to, there were ninety-two people riding in one person, right?
There were ninety-two, uh, passenger rides and all the rest were one passenger. Ninety-two passenger rides, there was one passenger, there were three hundred and seventy trips total, so. Very good. The contract. Um, I I don't have what the contract was for last year, but. But yeah, um, this year, this year is. All right, there is a motion table and a second, Mrs. Thomas. Okay, I'm stable next to you. Uh, next is I am C a motion approved price quote from Starfish I T emergencies for the service for a three-month period. January, February, and March twenty-three amount to exceed sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, this is the standard price quote from Starfish. Uh, we do have. Incidentally, um, we do have a bid opening, uh, just before the holidays, uh, regarding our I T services. And this day that I should will be doing those bids and meeting and making recommendations in this time period. Um, and I suspect this will be the last of these sorts of emergency support service quotes that will we need to entertain. But we do need one more while we finish this process. I would ask for a motion approved. Uh, and, uh, to you for. Okay, thank you. We have a motion that Mr. King to approve the quote for emergency support service in March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three for the amount of sixteen thousand six hundred and fifty. There is that. Second, any discussion? Very good motion carries. Uh, next is the added I M D, uh, discussion regarding revised proposal for reconstruction of the city hall and its roof. Um, Tony brought this memo, which I don't, I don't believe any of us have that opportunity to read, but. Example, this item, uh, was here previously for the request for approval to the code. Um, adult construction, that's the minimum eighteen thousand five hundred dollars. I'll go request that we go back to A R B. For review, A R B did review it. Uh, I was not present at that meeting, but, uh. The adult construction was there presenting and providing sample materials. Uh, they requested to add some things, change the front door, uh, redirect the downspouts. And, uh, do some footer work associated with the columns to the roof. So McElty has now provided us with a revised quote. If you look at the beginning of the quote, the original quote was eighteen thousand five hundred, the additional word added another six thousand dollars. Current quote is twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars to the side. I've attached to this, uh, memo that came from our email, it came from the building part with some of their questions, which we will address future. Uh, having to do with the mailbox, the exterior light, and again, the downspout. All of those will be addressed in part of the work you're doing. Uh, yet following that was the sketch that was provided to A R B and reviewed and approved the changes. And then I had the original quotes or proposals from a number of contractors, but they provided and a picture of the city hall. Uh, I'm requesting that the council approve. Uh, the quote for the mayor to enter into a proposal with McElty construction. Underquote, they are waiting for the city to sign it first. Thank you. Uh, I need for your questions, just your own. Uh, yeah, um, so I see there's a new drawing here, so I'm assuming this came after the advice of A R B, correct? That was the napkin sketch, you were going. Before A R B or not? Before A R B, before that one went to A R B. My own question is, because it looks like the, um. The height of the overhang a little over, are there going to be any repairable for the fresh? I have since the business is lower a couple of feet. I'm not aware of changing any of the break. So I guess I'm curious why they. You look at the picture of the city hall entrance from the day, there's like two feet above the. Building there. Excitedly, I believe. Looks like the. I think it's a perspective, it's the way the drawing was drawn. Where, while the picture is taking it upward direction, you see the window, it's only partially visible on one, and the other goes the window fully. So it may be a scale issue. The window. Okay, so yeah, maybe just to ensure of the height of the canopy organ. In line with the existing prices, not to pack the. Yes. They maybe need to be taller at the time. Any other comments? Mr. President, do you ask for a motion? Is anybody operating a motion to, uh, prove your kind? I think I'm going to make a merit through the amount of vote from. The penalty construction and amount to two twenty-four thousand five hundred with the condition that the height of the canopy. Uh, is maintained. Same height of the existing. Very good. We have a motion, Mr. Brown, second by Mrs. Brown. A discussion of motion. Saying that, Mrs. Thomas.
Hi, this is. What I.
Uh, next then is I have the further discussion regarding the vote moved in council meetings to the council. For two days, city hall and report from Director of Law. Um, all right, Mr. Peter.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we had a conversation at the last meeting about the change, uh, requested that the law director prepare a memorandum regarding the issues. Of the meeting exact media, uh, that may be involved with having a viewing room separated apart from the main council chambers. Understand that that was been prepared and I wanted to turn it over to the board director for that important.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. I did prepare a memorandum that was distributed to the council and mayor earlier today. Uh, that memorandum indicates that the ADA does, excuse me, doesn't apply to the city, in the city of populated, compiled ADA requirements connection with. Um, its facilities. Um, there is a particular, um, because the ADA applies, we have a little more broad, what might be applicable to, um. The scenario of returning meetings to upper chambers at city hall. And there's a provision in the ADA that indicates that, um, it is discriminatory to provide, um. An opportunity or service. To a disabled person that is different from or separate from that opportunity or service provided to others. Um, unless the opportunity or service is provided in a manner that is quote as effective. Those who vote as that provided to others. Uh, so. In connection with the, um, question as to whether having a remote viewing room would satisfy. The requirements of the ADA, I think a lot would depend on the facts of that remote viewing room. And in particular, um, I think the city in order to meet the ad hoc effect of requiring, they'll need to make sure that it had. Um, sound system in place on one hand and technology on the other that that worked fairly smoothly. And it allowed a disabled person in that room to participate in public comment. Um, to participate in real crime as well as well to do. And that, um, we have reasonable certainty that our technologies are going to hold up, that we don't have. Um. Kinds of interruptions or, um, obstacles to as effectively. Um, as a standard, um, that we sometimes experience here. Um, I know, for example, earlier this evening, we had a resident participating in a committee meeting who was having trouble hearing one person. And we would have to be careful about having assistance in place. Um, and having a process in place to eliminate that and our defect. Um, if we do have impacts either in our technology or in our system, that could that. Uh, could be a natural exposure. I've not had a chance, um, this one, just through the volume of my work to take over there and carry the case law. Have the acting follow-up of a guy in the case file that, um, is something that council would like me to do. Um, I don't want to, you know, foreclose the possibility from a legal standpoint, but I do want to make sure that. We understand that the rest of the challenges and who has more to do with immediate impact of language in the ADA.
I think for my part. Wanting to change to that occasion is motivated by the technological issue that we repeatedly have here. Our residents want access to the meetings virtually. They discuss our business, their business. On virtual forum, they complain that they can't hear us. They try to join us, you know, on the links that we post. Which in the past, you remind, may be a meeting's issue. If you tell someone, you know, and it, you can engage your counsel in attendance meetings virtually and, you know, speak and then. You're not able to do that here. That's a problem. And we invested ten to thousands of dollars in the audio video system that we have here. And it doesn't broadcast, and that's a problem. So we have, you know, this owl as a makeshift. You know. Option, but I think returning to a more permanent council chambers where we're in control and can invest in. The internet connection, I think, is really important and something that our residents, uh, those who have, you know. Mobility devices or use, you know, use a mobility device or otherwise need assistance, you know, sending stairs or not. Um, and I think that we're moving back to the more permanent council chambers where we can invest in that technology, make sure that it's still, make sure that it's working. Um, is a way to provide access to all of our, you expect with their level. Yes, just like.
Um, I'd like a very limited rule. We're not. According to my neighbors. Be able to do or participate. Virtually. Listen and after when we try to view the meetings, they are intelligible at best. Um, so I agree that if we were in a location where we have the ability to. Think about, right? The use of the internet and recording. And that knows about what's coming. Gotta be a step in the right direction.
I would agree, Mr. Gold, this is my goal, that we should continue to support the opportunity of trying to see all teams. It's an investment made in the technology. To do that, to forward. We're not, we're saying going back, but that's previous council meetings. Committees is here as microphones are not wired directly into the cell. Or the sound is trying to pick up the ambient noise, which can be difficult, uh, to hear and understand. This is that.
Um, I have two of the agreements, I think we are all agreement, but we want to maximize the access. Ability of our residents to participate in meetings whether they're in person or virtually. So the question is, is the current, um, situation better or worse, or would be an improvement? To shift to a different, um, location for the virtual card. Um, that would be really the question and how to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Snacks, Mr. King. Um, so in regard to moving the city hall. To repeat. That's. Do nobody. Some of this eventually does. And the quickest path getting. High-quality streaming available. Re-engage. Find some other manner to get. From a location to the hall. Again, building news that evolves. Same here for the.
Um, the older gentleman, um, we invested all this money in trying. Whereas meetings, we've heard participated in. I would presume, um, that any. Equipment that we purchased to use just evolved, the thought would be put into it that. That's such a curvy then transfer to one disability and and build that there.
Thank you.
I think that would be my preference as well to just get at work. The time communications director who has presumably engaged with school board as much as it could be in the past several months to have the system failed and used for several months without revolution. I mean, I can imagine that the idea of speaking to our partners at the school district didn't surprise anybody. I fear that there's not a revolution. There's not a way to move forward here. I'm certain we would have found it after several months of, you know, communication. So that's why I think moving on in a new direction is better at this point. And I believe that, you know, the system of the investment here will and can be, you know, brought to council chambers. And maybe it is we engage with our contractor who provided this to us and says, look, say, you know, listen, what do we need to do to, you know, have a viewing location in another area. My understanding from representation from inspection folks is that at least we have some type of network going on between City Hall and and the annex, perhaps you could have it be on an internal beach that we're not, you know, subject to the internet even. But I think land communication for video is always more reliable than wifi and we have the ability to do that at all, which we don't here.
This is what.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I'm going to give this a poke of cream through on her phone and explain what she tried and it is true that this is important. That was, you know, the reason that we purchased.
I agree with all the frustrations that everyone and Dyess had expressed. It's frustrating with the school, you know, where the relationship, the local community relationship, what's that where we can? Um, you know, so just within the back of your mind, if we want to work with Starfish or any other vendor to make this work and how much that costs, probably we've explored all of them. You know, you don't want to put any money here. And also we're back at City Hall or we're at, you know, location next door to City Hall and we've explored other options besides City Hall. I mean, if you want to give me like a little bit of direction, it's like, you know, we're not going to explore going back to, if we, if we're going back to City Hall, yeah, I'd just help come with us. And we would work fine. If we're going somewhere else, you know, we move in there. If it's definitely going to be, we're going to be here until the new city hall is built. Or then, yeah, I'd agree that the old system isn't the long-term solution. So again, I'm not trying to cast it back to anyone by too long, make sure that we don't go ahead and doing something, spending the money and having the bad trip. So whatever, you know, correction you want to give me, if it, where I think, again, I don't want to speak for comfort, just, you know, watching this meeting, if it's, if we're unable to move to City Hall, and again, I don't know, we're unable to move to City Hall and we're going to be here for a year, two years, five years, given this, you know, redouble the efforts to make this work. And again, I don't know if it's nudging school or if it's working with probably not like Starfish, but I would think I got a lot of time with IT business and I've got a new TV for Christmas, not my sense. But I will work with what we need to work with to upgrade this to the secondary. The room wasn't built for this. So, yeah, I'm getting sound admittedly, I'm failing to do it now, but I stay closest to the microphone. I think we all need to do this. But then, you know, just getting closer to the microphone is a long-term solution. It doesn't work. But that's one minor stuff we all can take. But going forward, you tell me where we're going to be for a year, we'll, I'll do my best to do it.
I think one of the things we, there's several things we keep in mind as a vendor, we have. You know, one of those things you're just touching on, that you're not like these communications, this city information director. But we are right now, we're doing this for our managed IT professional. And once we have one, we'll be in a much different situation with regard to having streaming, we can be on for exactly this type of project. With that, I'd like to remind everyone that when we were using city council chambers, the upper chambers at City Hall, we never had streaming video there either. So how we get there would be a first time thing for us. It was something that I have always intended and hoped to do eventually. And then, you know, after instance with the chairman, we end up moving, our meetings off site. You know, we have them over here, our auditorium with regard to, you know, equal access that we have to be able to provide. And the standard about separate that is being as effective and, you know, we have a legal standard that we actually have to adhere to. And at the same time, we're also talking about a desirable, but not legally required offering. We'd like to make our residents with regard to streaming video happening live during these meetings. I mean, that's something we would all, I think, favor, but it's not legally required at all. Actually having this that is separate and that are effective, equally effective is, would seem legally required. So we don't want to find ourselves in a position where in pursuit of something that we believe will be popular and desirable and yet not actually required is done at the cost of not doing something that is legally required and falling short. So with all that though, I also want to remind folks, I know some of you have been on your chambers, you know, in the last few weeks. We did have an informal, non-public meeting up there that a couple of you attended. That, that room is different than it was before. It is, it is not kept up the same way. It has workspace up there for our clerk of counsel, our assistant clerk of counsel and our agent. So there's far fewer seating, much less seating than what we have here. This is kind of light night. Several of our directors and chiefs perhaps, and we don't have, we have very few members in public here this evening. But it is not unusual to have more folks present. And, and we need to be able to accommodate that when they choose to attend. So, you know, that all said, you know, I, I share everybody's consternation that this is not an ideal situation that we're in now. I don't know that we are not creating a we're undertaking and happy to resolve more and different problems to try and make that move. Both to do things that we know our residents ideally would like, but also things that we must legally. As of right now, if somebody just will be there, wants to attend this meeting, they can. There, there, there is a way into this building that doesn't require going up and down steps and can be done. So this does happen a lot. And that said, you know, Mr. Hook also touched on this briefly, you know, we were about to file, this is not any kind of stuff, it hasn't been stuff public already, we're about to file our end of date proceeding with regard to property adjacent to the City Hall complex. And there is a meeting room in that property that is D and accessible. And given how much larger that room is and that that room is designed for addressing the public, I would, my brothers would be, if we were able to come to terms sooner rather than later on acquiring that property, then our focus would be not on trying to turn to council chambers, but on trying to set up new chambers in that building while we continue to explore the plans for, long-term plans for this.
This is what.
Yeah, I think, I think Mr. Hook and my colleagues can shine in. I think if maybe you could involve Starfish, we can redoubt to the board of education one more time into their idea, we have Starfish as our IP component right now. Try to figure out how we can at least get the streaming and see the next two weeks and then it's up there. And then we can explore the ADA keys in the next step. In terms of property that we, that we acquired, that helps with a few months away. So we still need it before, you know, even actually to make one other kind of council chambers. I mean, you can't, can't figure that area for me. I'm not saying I'm going to kill all of it. So even if we can figure out that, but we don't know. So meantime, I guess we're starting to, you can please contact Starfish and the two of you to the board.
That'll be my first call on handles from.
Yes, I think also with the limitations of the communication role. I know that, you know, Kelly, you've worked with China Five, New Year Church, I've heard the program, and I think this was a death. You know, your work and research. Would you be open to working with the law director to identify, identify where the chambers? Then I'll make a motion to request that, a motion to direct the clerk of counsel to work with the law department to identify ADA and public meeting act, find options for returning to City Hall.
Okay. There's a motion by Mr. Gold. Kelly, do you have a? Thank you, Mrs. Snacks.
Can you make a motion again? Sure. It's a motion to direct the clerk of counsel to work with the law department to identify ADA and public meeting act, find options for returning to City Hall.
Okay, so we have motion, there's a second.
Awesome.
Second by Mrs. Snacks. Any further discussions now on the motion, this is what.
Yeah, I just want to make sure because that might simple in the wire that you're still in the opinion that you're still.
Oh, sure. I think it's completely separate from part with this. I see kind of, you know, not being the IT director, I know Kelly has a little more experience around some of those systems and help identify and frankly implement some of those here. My thought was if she had that capacity and openness and willingness to do it, that she would work with the law director instead to identify programming that would be compliant and what that would be, I think, understanding this is what is necessary and you can determine how to get it done. So that would be the bottom thought. But no, I think those both of those things can happen simultaneously.
Very good. Any further discussions and stuff?
Um, I I think in what, where you get this is very difficult from your children or I've all that one. Okay.
There's nothing further?
No, Mr. Hook. Small town. Um, we're sitting over there. I saw that. Why we ended up leaving over there.
Um, was it like lighting or? They couldn't get the lights on.
Lights.
Right, yeah, the upper lights. So we moved over there.
Cause I'm just thinking, in terms of, we're under the stop. Maybe we could demonstrate.
Maybe, I, I, you know, there are speakers out there that could generate feedback if we set up all the mics in there. I don't really use the mics over there or if we just turn them down a little.
Are these your speakers then?
We use this, when we are even here, I don't know if we, yeah, that's a good idea.
There are speakers, maybe in among the lights out there that, that some folks have to get out to hear.
Oh, so you're hearing us speak those speakers, not you people?
Just go over and say we can hear them.
I see that there are speakers, I didn't know there were speakers.
Yeah, though those may or may not monitor, but, but the speakers, if people attend this meeting and then they sit out where the directors and chiefs are, they hear us through speakers that are located over their heads that are, you see the discs that are throughout the drop ceiling here? Those are speaking.
Oh, I got to look for our blogger.
Yeah, some of them are legacy and not ours as a owner. So, so if we set up over there and, and, and whoever came in and did this, did it with with having in mind that the mics would be over here and speakers would be over there, I don't know what kind of feedback we might get if we set up all the microphones underneath those speakers or if we would just have to disconnect this speaker.
Can we turn them off?
I don't.
What do you have in the room that's over here?
I thought there was just a lot like a
I've been a whole time.
Yeah, there's not one, right?
I don't know which not.
One way to find out.
Maybe you can open that.
We could also call people that we paid.
Yeah, they go.
Because the owl is picking up on our audio. We're speaking and it's being broadcast into this room, but it's picking up audio in there and speaking. And we're not amplified in A, in B. You try.
Motion to move to the other side.
What if you just vote the chair every day? I'm like, I think we go do that day. You're in charge of those things, so.
Yeah, we didn't all test, we didn't test the wheels we were using. We want to make sure this stands.
Yeah, screw the basket.
Again, executive session here where people are seated here, but we'll, we'll dig across that. All right, so we have a motion for the questions of all, Mrs. Snacks, we call.
Yes, I, Mrs. Blinzel, I, Mrs. Ross, I, Mrs. Wise and Mrs. Rule.
I. I. Very good motion carries. All right. All right, so the next item on the agenda is I have a motion to enter executive session with the purpose of discussing legal proceedings, personnel, real estate matter. The administration has had anything for which we'll be seeking any executive session this evening. So regarding the other matters, we will then move on to the reports. They have communications from various departments and most part of
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year upon. I will pen everybody's preliminary reports on surprising transactions that took place in twenty twenty-two. I just ran the numbers today and you're not officially closed, so there's some transactions posted. But did want to run over some highlights for you. Yeah, I'll get this. Total estimated revenue for twenty twenty-two for all funds, twenty-one million six hundred forty-seven thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars. Original estimated revenue for all funds was twenty million fourteen thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars. So we exceeded our estimate by about one six billion dollars. Total estimated revenue recorded in the general fund in twenty twenty-two, seventeen million one hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred sixty dollars. Original estimate for revenue for the general fund, fifteen million four thousand nine hundred and six. Total budgets for all funds in twenty twenty-two, that was based on the last amendment that was passed. Twenty-three million four hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars. The actual expenses for all funds last year, twenty-one million four hundred five thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars. General fund budget in twenty twenty-two was set at a final offer of sixty million six hundred eighty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars. The actual expenses last year for the general fund, fifteen million
Fifteen million five hundred sixty two thousand three hundred ninety four dollars. As far as bond balances, general funds started the year with a balance of. Five million three hundred forty thousand nine hundred six dollars. We ended the year with an unexpended balance six million five hundred thirty eight thousand five hundred dollars. So that's about one point two dollar increase in the balance. For all laws, we started the year with total balances ten million one hundred twenty eight thousand. Four hundred fifty dollars. End of the year with total balances of ten million thirteen thousand seven hundred sixty two. So. We have slightly applying in terms of fund balance for all funds. Caveat that is that we still stand still outstanding receivables related to the Cedar Road project. That are payable from the Wacko's. It was a book on our GAAP basis financial statements that balance. Slightly small. Again, I'll get these preliminary reports out to you tomorrow. Once we close the year probably next week. We'll run the final numbers. If anybody has any specific question about any ones interested over the year with a great expense. Just let me know on the air. And is. Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Um, you're in the street. Any questions, Mr. Kennedy? Very good, thank you. Director of laws, you're on. I just saw you around down in there. Okay. Very good. Uh, public safety, please.
Very good report.
Okay, no, thank you. Public safety buyer, Chief Burgo is on vacation. Service.
Uh, no report there.
And thank you. Um, mostly computer development, Mr. Kennedy. Uh, city engineer, Mr. Chin.
Who are you working there?
Thank you, Mr. Chin. Communication, civic engagement.
No report there.
Thank you. Economic Development, this is Trapp.
Um, I just want to remind everyone about our starting global update committee meeting that we're going to be having that's. On January twenty fifth from six to eight P M. It is going to be a junior in the jury room. Um, the only thing we have to decide on. I'm gonna look at. And try to work. It's probably determining public. Or maybe go have a way to do those meetings and then plus take a consideration that everyone. Part of the committee is vulnerable, being planning. They're important. To be having.
Something that I can clarify. So it'll be a committee meeting of economic development. So as long as our forum consists of the committee members, what I understand is kind of, oh, it should be good. The subcommittee members who will be advising us, they do not need to involve them. Of all those. What I.
Meeting and there's a group of. It's not so easy.
Yeah, if you propose noticing the meetings, we need to notice some joint meetings of. Florida. So for those. It would be a joint meeting of economic development committee and E C D A, A R D and the mission. And then. Riverside.
The uh all there is just like place that people all their members.
So it's it's committed to all as well. It'd be a committee of the whole economic development committee, planning commission. B C A, A R D, joint notice meeting. Um, so I guess the question is what happens uh. With respect to that, you can go to particular board of your lesson form and um.
Well, you're less important, then you don't have a meeting approved.
Right.
And then if it's economic, maybe anything that gets voted on. For council, only those committee members would be.
Right.
Um, and as long as we have that understanding, since it's a five degree, we might just hear from all parties. Um. So that's why I just want to be.
I guess to help that are explained, it's similar to the financing advisory committee where we have residents advising finance. Members but they don't vote, but they're advising.
Right, but but residents aren't part of the already established board of commission that they're on where they are for the sunshine laws. So that's why you have to notice those meetings. Doing with three or four members of these other which may have the official meeting.
So let me put together more of his. Ticular request about noticing all the meetings. Um, for the most in page events. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Trump. Thank you. All right, um, that brings us to the fourth standing events. The connection. Building houses.
Number four, the city.
My problem. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Economic development, Mr. Brown.
Yes, there, um, this chapter already mentioned the meeting on the fifth, and then there will be another meeting much. Very helpful then. Yeah, January eleventh, six P M. Oh, baby, need to. I'm proud. So we need. The. May one.
Very good. Where's the location?
Up here.
Right, very good. Thank you. Okay, now my answer is.
Yes, thank you.
There are order. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Safety.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a good safety committee meeting, including a visit from the executive director and the sugar knowledge dispatch. Uh, this Mico regarding the communication from the C B D. In partnership with the city and seeing the great partnership, making responsive to the issues that come up around communication or the grateful for their partnership. We all had a discussion of letting certain safety issues, especially those in on Hattie Road. And request that citizens continue to notify police in the emergency number for emergencies and the non emergency number for non urgent emergencies. Of any traffic safety or other issues related to slow traffic in their neighborhood. Quite likely to be had. Uh, and the police chief is going to work with the administration to see using the Malaga Street Common Library. Uh, I think it can be based on the street and report back to the safety. Finally, there's a discussion regarding the University of Hattie and home and special attention program where the letting our road in the snow. Uh, when they go out of town or if they maybe feel like they're home in special attention from. Our patrol officers, they can call on the four hours a day to have an emergency member. And request that they're home in place. They've been had with some force by defense. Meeting who are for the very early standard of meeting in February. And uh, what is the end of that?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Service utilities, Mrs. Stan.
Mayor, but um tomorrow there is a service and utilities committee meeting. You're fit, yeah.
Very, thank you, Mrs. Stan. You ready to roll?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There is, there will be a um. Infrastructure meeting, um, I hope to be planned um in the month of February. Thank you. Question for. Um, I would like to see clarification about committee for health and grass. So for instance, did anyone, anyone um. Add an agenda item and anyone just add a document to hand out? Um, it's one of them.
I don't think we have anything that is specifically suggested that, but. In all terms, um, council committees, the whole, both um. The agenda and the um. Documents that are considered at any particular um committee meeting. Um, I have noted in the past that um. Council committees are able to um. Essentially control what the discussion. One that if. Um, the floor is open to the general public, that that all members of the general public present. Um, which would include any other elected official who does not a member of the committee. Um, be given a uh be given the opportunity to participate.
Okay, um, it's a lot of lines. If um. One gives permission, the chair gives permission for anyone to add an agenda item, I mean before anyone in general or. Um, just to admit a document that wasn't um. Brought to the attention of the chair. Anyone can just do that?
I'm not sure I can answer your question, but if what you're saying is anyone inserted that. The answer to that would be no. Um, if if the council committee meets and open for the meeting. They can't make a choice who gets participated in that for open to those.
And so I'm under, so I think hoping that someone can present a community here.
I would say yes.
Um. Thank you.
Any regrets, Mrs. Wilson? Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I understand that it's reports, discussion committees and taking action there on. Ready for. Saying, is there any unfinished or miscellaneous? Saying, is there a motion or jury? Motion by the board or a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Mrs. Thomas, we follow.
Hi.
Hi.
Right, thank. We will.
Um. Very good. April, you're in. Every Friday.
If. It isn't that. And. I'll do say that. I'm.
Yes.
Thank you.
He's so fast, but he's doing more.
Well, I can.
Or one year. Why is this that sending you? Because um. You have to find. I know. What was the goal?
Your your.
So.
Good.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. They would know. Eight or ten. That is. Or. Not willing to stand for. Those are the words I think that we do in this.
I respect you.
Probably any time.
Thank you.
Well, it's very, very good. Yeah, another friend. So. Yeah, everything's. I can handle words. It's right. And we. Mm hmm.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, I think. I don't. Okay.
What is that, thank you.
My wife like you wanna move. Yeah, one.
Yeah.
You're skiing.
And I'm not a skier.